All right, welcome everyone to the first local candidate forum organized by Denton Matters. We have with us the place six candidates for the Denton City Council. So first allow me to make some introductions. Chris Watts is a lifelong resident of Denton. He graduated from North Texas with a Bachelor of Science degree in computer science and a Masters of Education degree in counseling and student services. He graduated with a law degree from the Texas Wesleyan University School of Law in 2000. From 2007 to 2013, he served on the Denton City Council as the District Four Representative. He then served as mayor from 2014 to 2020. In 2017, the Texas Homeless Network awarded him its Outstanding Community Service Award. And in 2020, the United Way of Denton County awarded him the Dr. Betty Meyers Humanitarian Award. Amber Brigall owns a small business and is a member of the Denton Chamber of Commerce, the Denton Rotary Club, the League of Women Voters, and the Denton Main Street Association. She began volunteering after moving to Denton 13 years ago. She has served on the Bike Plan Task Force, the 2012 Street Bond Committee, and the Community Development Advisory Board. She is the former Vice Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission and currently serves as the Chair of the Zoning Board of Adjustments. Amber is the parent of two children and four rescue animals. She and Adam Brigall have been married for 20 years. I'm Peggy Hinkle-Wolff. Some of you may know me from my byline in the Denton Record Chronicle where I worked as a reporter for 15 years. I left the paper in July 2020 to finish a book contract. And this year I joined the volunteers at KUZU 92.9 FM, Denton's only nonprofit radio station to produce the local news. So I'm going to do a shameless plug here and invite you to listen. At 10:00 AM each Wednesday, our five-minute news segment goes by pretty fast. So if you miss it, you can catch the rebroadcast at 3:00 PM on Thursdays. Okay, now onto the format for this forum. I've written three questions for the candidates. No one has seen the questions in advance, including the forum organizers. And we aren't going to limit the time that the candidates have to respond to the questions because we want to give voters the best chance to hear their full answers. But we're also asking that the candidates respect everyone's time and be brief and to the point. And we'll take turns answering the questions and if needed, make time for some rebuttal. In other words, if during the course of a second candidate's answer to the question, the first candidate wants to respond to a direct comment, we'll make a little time for that. Finally, since I introduced the candidates, we will also take a few minutes at the end of this forum for each of them to make some closing remarks. And that's all I have to say. I can hear my voice going, so let's let them do the talking for a while. The first question goes to Chris. Alrighty, the city budget took some hits during the pandemic and winter storm Yuri. What do you think are the biggest threats to our cities, our city budgets' long-term recovery? And what might the city council do to address that?
Well, thank you Peggy and Denton Matters for hosting this forum. Appreciate it. Good to see you Peggy. Good to see you. That's a great question. Because I think, of course, I wasn't on council at the time during Snowstorm or Ice Storm Yuri. During the pandemic, we all anticipated that the budget would take a horrific hit. So, you know, cost-cutting measures were put in place. Voluntary sort of retirement packages were offered. Long story short is, our budget didn't take as big a hit as we thought it did. The sales tax revenue stayed fairly stable with a small drop. But when you look at the cost savings that were achieved, the budget itself outside of the utility budget, the DME budget, which took a big hit during Snow, Ice Storm Yuri, that remained fairly stable. And so from a, from a general fund perspective, the general fund was in and is in good shape. Five-year forecasts show, you know, they always show the fund balance decreasing. But we went back and looked at, you know, in the fifth year typically, it's never as it was projected. It's usually in better shape. Now, the snowstorm with the utility budget was a different story. My understanding was it was $110 million hit or more. And therefore, you know, they had to exercise some commercial paper options and other things to help finance that long-term so that we could absorb that without having any type of budget, utility rate increases. I think moving forward, that's going to be the biggest concern. The biggest concern is how do we continue to keep rates low, both tax rates and utility rates? How do we look at the financial position of DME itself with that debt service? The debt service is already in place, so we are meeting that debt service. So to continue to look at economic development opportunities that not only will bring in good jobs into the city and bring in tax base into the city to take that tax base off of residential property owners or to relieve that a little bit. We also have to look at how can we continue to generate revenue for the utilities, especially the electric department? So as we had that data center come in, and there's some controversy about that. Long story short, it produces, once it's up and running, now it's not fully running right now. It will, it will provide almost enough revenue in the utility fund to carry that debt service. So I trust the utility departments and DME and the management and city manager and finance staff to really, they've done a great job. They weathered that storm, excuse the pun, very well. We just have to make sure that we continue to manage the budget in a way that provides core services, you know, meets the needs of the citizens with the minimum tax rate that we can charge in order to obtain those goals. And the utility budget will have to really look at, how do you continue to pay that debt service? And I think right now they've got a good plan. And I think moving forward, we just have to keep our eye on the ball and future councils, not just the one coming up, but ones five, six, seven years down the road, will still have to keep that in mind as they, as they move forward.
All right, thanks Chris. Amber, do you want me to restate the question or are you, are you ready to go?
Well, I'm going to kind of piggyback off of what, of what my opponent just said. I mean, he's, he's right in that, you know, our sales tax did continue to grow. We're, we have a lot of, we have a lot of business here in Denton and a lot, and a lot of those big box stores got to stay open during the pandemic. Unfortunately, a lot of small businesses, including my own, were closed for a very long time. And we're still seeing that loss. We just lost Armadillo Ale Works, you know, last month. So, so Chris is right in that, you know, sales tax did continue to grow. I think we do need to do more to support our small business community. As I said, Armadillo Ale Works just closed. My, my neighbor in my building, a black woman-owned business, she had to close another black woman-owned immigrant-owned business. Their Belle in McKinney just closed at the end of last month. So businesses are continuing to close and what's going to happen is we're going to begin to kind of chip away and lose that small Denton vibe, that small, that small-town vibe that Denton has. In addition to losing those, those sales tax dollars. So it's in our best interest not only to support small businesses, to make sure that they can continue to not just survive, but thrive. It's going to be in our best interest to hold on to that Denton vibe that we have. It's also in our best interest to, to continue to grow the tax base. You know, I, as a small business owner, I know what it's like to live on a budget, right? Like my business completely closed. I, I owned a massage studio and that's not something that you can do online. It's not something that you can do curbside, like it's literally touching people, right? And so when we closed in March of 2020, we closed. I didn't know if we were going to be closed for two weeks, two months, or two years. And I had to look at the money that I had set aside over the years of continual planning and saving and budgeting to make that pot of money last for an indefinite period of time, right? It was a very, it was a very challenging time and we did almost close. Fortunately, we're on the other side of that now. I've got a team and a studio that's twice as big as it was when we, when we did close in March of 2020. We're doing good now. I'm going to take that same sort of knowledge, wisdom lessons that I learned over the last two years to make sure that all businesses in Denton continue to thrive and to grow, which will, you know, grow our tax base and help with the city budget. It will make sure that we have, you know, good paying jobs for people in Denton. It's going to support families. And I'm going to be, you know, looking at your overall tax bill and making sure that we're putting your dollars to best use, providing those essential government services, paving roads, making sure that our fire and police are fully staffed, and also, you know, building parks and libraries, like that's also essential government services. So I'm going to be taking that knowledge that I learned over the last couple of years, especially having to live on a budget and apply that to my role as your next city councilwoman.
Okay, thanks for that. All right, we're going to move on to the second question. We know campaigns cost money. And in many ways, the Denton firefighters model transparency with their campaign financing. They protect the individual votes of the rank and file when they endorse. But the rest of their work with the Political Action Committee is open to the press and to the public so that voters can understand where their support is going and where it's coming from. So in that spirit of transparency, I would like each of you to name your top two or three financial supporters and describe your relationship to them. And when I say top two or three, I mean more than one and not more than three. I think Amber will start with you.
Yes, okay. So my top supporter donated $5,000. I admit I have never met her before in my life. She is a stay-at-home mom in Georgia who came across one of my Facebook pages, was inspired by my story, did a little bit of digging. So I was running for office and wanted to support a progressive candidate in this, in this local election because she understands that local elections matter. I reached out to her the next day in a text and I was like, that was very generous of you. Can you tell me why? And that was, that was her reason. So it was just, it was just a gift. And I will always accept the kindness and generosity of strangers because together we are the United States of America. And I just thought it was just a very, very compassionate and forward-thinking of her. I have a couple of big donors out of Robeson Ranch. I'm trying to think like my next big donor would be like, oh, no, my next one down would be a thousand dollar donation from my aunt in Minnesota. She is very politically active and she is all for female leadership. So she, I just saw her actually last week and she got on her checkbook. She's like, oh, early voting starts in two weeks, let me give you some money. So that was from her. And then I have several $500 donors, many of who are, many whom live here in town. Several out of Robeson Ranch, you know, another uncle that I have. So it's mostly just the generosity of friends and family. I haven't, I haven't taken any special interest money. I, I told the Texas母亲 Association when I met with them that, you know, though I would welcome their endorsement. I said, I thought it would be very, I, I said I would not accept any campaign, any, any campaign donations because I thought it would be maybe a conflict of interest if one of their members came to present a project at city council. And I didn't want to look like I was showing any favoritism. So you can see I've got over 350, I want to say, individual donors. On my last campaign, finance reports are truly grassroots efforts and I'm just, I'm really grateful for everyone's support.
Chris?
Yeah, the top donor I believe is Jim and Linda McNatt for $1,000. I met the McNatts when we were building the new animal shelter. Or we actually, before that, when we were trying to figure out exactly what to do with the, with the animal shelter. And we got it on the ground or we started to. And Jim and Linda basically bought the naming rights to that and provided a tremendous contribution to that. So we've not had any business dealings. It's been more altruistic. It's been primarily related to the adoption center. I remember specifically, I was sitting on a plane going somewhere and I got a call from him about something that had, some event that had occurred out there. And it was a tragic event and, you know, I didn't know anything about it. So it was really, really led to some, some new policies and procedures out at the adoption center. So they've been just great philanthropists in our community. And I've enjoyed my relationship with them as it's related to the adoption center. Bob and Betty Sherman, who are my treasurers, they also were very involved. Betty, basically the Denton Animal Support Foundation, you know, she was the founder of that. And when we were looking at the animal shelter, the adoption center, especially I remember one particular work session when, you know, the costs were going up and things such as that. And I just finally said, look, if we're going to do this, we need to do it right because we'd done such a mediocre and unsatisfactory job as things began to move in our old shelter facilities. And so we've enjoyed a good relationship just as just friends. She's been my treasurer for, I think, all of my mayoral campaigns. And then the next one would be, I've got a couple of $500 donations. One was from the Dallas Firefighters Association, you know, for their endorsement. So I've enjoyed a good relationship with them over the years.
You mean Denton Firefighters?
What did I say?
Dallas.
That, no, Denton, yeah, Denton Firefighters Association. Sorry about that. Sorry guys. You know, you know. Yeah, no, I've enjoyed a good relationship with them for the times that I've served on council. I remember when I took a tour as a district representative of the old fire stations, Fire Station Four and Three. They were deplorable. I mean, 40 years old, people couldn't even get, you couldn't even get the equipment in the door and it was almost embarrassing. So we started and embarked on a campaign to just help them, you know, to provide facilities, safe facilities, modern facilities so that we can get them in and out to help people who are in need without having to worry about their equipment within their, their station house. The other one is Brandon Martino. Brandon used to be part of, I think, a development company, but I read just recently that they sold that. They also had title resources, I believe. I've closed very, I've closed a couple of deals there over 10 years. But just friendship, just knowing them and some of the, the nonprofits, you know, I've seen them involved. And so those were, gosh, I basically, I think, reported $6,000 or $6,800 or I can't remember off the top of my head and provided some of my own campaign funds through a personal loan into that. I really, I'm not really big on asking people for money, quite frankly. Because I think that, not because it's, it's, it's difficult, it's just, you know, it's, it's tough to do that. I think, well, I'm here, I'm going to do the job. And also I want to have my own investment in it. Because if I have my own investment in it, it means that I'm willing to put not just my time and energy, but my finances to, to ensure that, you know, I'm committed to the, to the process. And, and to avoid those issues of, well, so-and-so gave you money and therefore, you know, what's your relationship with them? And there's a lot of talk about that in this campaign cycle. And I won't go into that because I'll, I'll take too long, but yeah.
Well, that's, that's why I asked the question. I thought maybe in the spirit of, we could, we could do it this way. So I wanted to.
May I, may I pop in and just, and just piggyback a little bit off of what Chris just said? Is that okay Peggy?
Yeah, you do get to rebut.
No, it's not even a rebut, it's just more of a comment because, because Chris, like I get it. Like it is awkward to ask people for money. Real awkward, especially coming out of this pandemic when I know so many, you know, fellow business owners and families are still struggling. So I want 100% here that, you know, I have, I have messaged people and texted people, but I haven't made any phone calls because it's just like, it's hard to be like, hey, how's it going? Can I have some money? Like that's, it's weird and awkward. I am, I'm glad for you Chris, that you, that you have the means to be able to support your campaign. I hear what you're saying that you want to have a personal investment. I'm glad that you have the means to do that. I don't, you know, I'm a, I'm a working parent, I'm a small business owner, you know, and it's, I, I do have to rely on the generosity of people. And we're just coming at it from different, different perspectives. But I'm just, again, I'm just so grateful, like I said, for that grassroots support. Because I am fully invested in this. I, you know, I haven't been able to contribute much of my own money because it's going to my mortgage and my kids' college funds and my utility bill and my car payments, you know.
Okay, all right, all right, all right, all right.
So can I, do I get equal time to not necessarily rebut, but because it wasn't a rebuttal?
Control of this, so I was, I cut you off for a reason and I wasn't sure what Amber's rebuttal is. So we're going to end this part because that, I get to do that. However, I will tell everyone watching this that candidates are required to disclose. So there is more information online. The city secretary very beautifully has uploaded all those things on the city's website. So you can find campaign finance information at cityofdent.com. And I just want to encourage voters that if they have a question, don't supply the information yourself. Just go ahead and ask the candidate this question I just asked, which is, I see you have a donation from this person. I'd like to understand your relationship. And let's, let's, let's remember we're a community. So, okay, in that spirit, remembering that we're a community. The, sorry, this is going to come off like a downer at first, but it was pretty tough and Amber's already kind of teed this up. The past two years have been bleak, even brutal. Many of us have lost a loved one to COVID or know someone suffering with long COVID. And during the darkest days of the pandemic, we literally sat in the dark during the deadly storm, the deadly cold of winter storm Yuri. So these long periods of insecurity and isolation have frayed relationships in the community. Is there a way to campaign and a way to govern that can be restorative? Or at least appeal to our better angels? Or at the very least, not further these feelings of frayed relationships and isolation and destruction in our community? So if so, what does that look like for you? And Chris, you get to start.
Sure. Well, you are absolutely right. Our community was devastated. Thank goodness that we had, you know, an outpouring of federal funds to help as much as they could with small businesses, with foreclosure, with eviction avoidance and things such as that. And quite honestly, it, it's hard to say this because so many people have lost their lives to COVID and families have been devastated. November of 2020, I got COVID. And I was in the hospital for three weeks and I really thought that I wasn't going to leave the hospital. And I've literally been recovering in 2021 from long COVID. And so when Snowstorm or Ice Storm Yuri hit, I'm sitting in my recliner with oxygen. It's going on and off every hour, just making sure that I just did the minimum that I could do. So I understand about fear. I understand about insecurity. I understand about love of family and the pulling together of community, which I believe, not only was our community devastated, but I saw how the community came together in those times to really help one another out, to really try to do the best that we could do to help everyone. So I think there is opportu, I say there's opportunity to be restorative. Yes, there is, because we are a restorative community. We are a community that cares and is compassionate, compassionate about individuals. You know, campaigns, you know, you're trying to show and educate the public why you would like them to support you. But that doesn't mean that you have to be uncivil about it. It, it means you got to stay true to your own personal values and those values of authenticity and trust. So yes, I certainly think it can be. And I think that as mayor for six years, I demonstrated that you can have differences of opinion, but you can also have conversation and dialogue that maximizes the benefit because you are treating people as you would want to be treated, the golden rule. It's going to take a commitment from everyone. Our country is so polarized right now, from the national to the state level, I mean, all over, it's polarized. And until we begin to try to move away from that polarization, and that can be done. It can be done with leadership. It can be done, which I believe that I demonstrated as mayor, it can be done with just being authentic and being honest with people, but still respecting their personhood. So I definitely think it can be. And I think we're, we're on the way to doing that. We're still recovering. I mean, this community in this country is still recovering from this. And it's just a matter of the golden rule, treat people as you would want to be treated. If everybody did that, if everybody did that, it would be a different place. So I certainly believe in the human spirit. I believe in people responding to compassion and honesty and authenticity. And I just have a lot of confidence in this community. And so it certainly can be, and I think it is. And we can do our part, one person at a time.
Thanks Chris. All right, Amber.
Yeah, so the question was how to restore frayed relationships in the community, is that right?
Is there a way to campaign and to govern, to govern that can be restorative? Or at least appeal to our better angels? Or at the very least, not further the destruction? And if so, what does that look like to you?
Good. That's a really great question. Politics is, I mean, it's ugly, it's, it's dirty and it doesn't have to be that way. I mean, we all have, what I love about local politics is that we all have a lot of the same interests. Like we might disagree on how to get there, but it's about smooth streets. It's about, you know, public safety and parks and libraries and safe neighborhoods and support for small businesses and making sure that, you know, everyone is, is thriving in our community. We, we can get, we can do that. I think, I think a lot of that has been lost unfortunately at city hall lately. You know, muting people's microphones, talking over council members, especially female council members. Like that's, that's not a great way to build decorum and mutual respect. It's not a great way to find compromise and, and find a way to work with others. I'm looking forward to being your next city councilwoman because, as, as an example, as an example, it's, it's no secret in Denton that one of my children is transgender, right? If I'm known for any one thing in this town, it's, it's that thing, right? Six years ago, I invited Attorney General Ken Paxton to my home to meet my family. Now, he's arguably my son's biggest threat to his equality and safety in the state. And I knew that if I could just extend an olive branch to him and have some sort of like dessert diplomacy, right? Like maybe we could find some common ground. Like that wasn't, that was a huge emotional effort that I put in to bring him into my home and entertain him for two and a half hours and make him carefully prepared meal, right? And I, I tried, I truly tried. And we can see now, you know, unfortunately, we didn't, I didn't reach him, you know. We can Google my name and see what's happening with CPS, right? So unfortunately, I didn't reach him, but that effort, I feel, really elevated the conversation and helped people see that two sides can sit down and, and get along at least for a couple of hours and try and work on an issue together. And that's really the type of leadership that I, that I try to bring to my small business, to raising my kids and to fighting for the, the issues that I think are important to fight for. I think we can find, additionally, I've served, I've served on city boards and commissions for the last 13 years. And if you ask anyone on any of those boards or commissions, I, we all, we got along. We, I was able to find compromise with them. I treated them with respect and didn't talk over them. I gave them their fair turn at the mic. And I think that that's, that's where it begins because we follow our leaders, right? And if our leaders are trashing each other at city hall and not treating each other with respect, that's just going to trickle down to the rest of the community. And that's, that's not the type of leadership that I want to see for the city of Denton.
Okay, it's time for closing statements. And when you got, you guys are probably skilled at this. But if there was something you wanted to share with folks that I didn't ask about, be sure to share that. And I won't be sharing your campaign website addresses. So in your closing statement, maybe lead with that, how to, how people can find out more information about your campaign. Okay, Amber, you're first.
Sure, yeah, so thank you again Denton Matters. Thank you Peggy, thank you Chris for, for being here tonight. Please everyone, if you tuned in. Again, my name is Amber Brigall. I would be so excited to be your next city councilwoman, asking for your vote on May 7th. Early voting starts April 25th, everyone's going to May 3rd. I am a dedicated volunteer to the city of Denton. I'm going to bring a lot of new ideas and some fresh perspectives that hasn't been seen before. As I spoke at our last forum in the Southeast Denton, the Sedna Group, I gave a fantastic forum just a couple of days ago. I argued that having the same people in charge all the time is, is bad for democracy. It's bad for problem-solving, it's bad for representation, it's bad for diversity. I have the bona fides, I have the expertise, I have a lot of experience working at city hall. I have not yet had the privilege and honor of serving as your city councilman yet, but I know how city hall works. And I think being, again, a working parent, small business owner, my husband works at, you know, one of the universities. I've got kids in the schools here. I've got a great perspective of what is facing real Denton families today. Lack of affordable housing, lack of multimodal transportation options. We have an environmental crisis we need to solve. I'd love to adopt a climate action plan for the city. I've got lots of ideas. I encourage you to check out my website, brigalfordenton.com.
There it is.
That's it, there we go, I wrapped it up. Thanks Peggy.
Thank you, Chris.
Hey, yes, thank you all for proposing this, Amber, thank you for, for participating. My website is chriswatson.com, certainly go visit that. Facebook is Chris Watts Denton. You know, I've said this in the past forums and I'm going to say it again. I, I had no intention. I, I had no intention to run, but as I've watched the city council over the last six months and as some decisions have been made that really don't have a basis, a strong basis, strong foundation in facts and data, that it concerned me. And as I've seen some decisions made that seem to cut out the, the public altogether, I just decided to run. I thought, you know, I need to give the community a voice, a different voice, a voice that they're familiar with. They may have a difference of opinion. They may have a, a change of heart and that's fine, but I love this community. And that's why I'm running. As far as people who've been in charge for a long time, being dangerous to democracy. First of all, no single person is in charge at the Denton City Council. I mean, that is a seven person body that is elected by the citizens of, of this city. So that's where the democracy is. It's in the voting booth. And that's who gets to decide, who do we want to lead collectively our city? So a couple of things that, ideas that I've put forth already. For sustainability, we look at, we need to start looking at putting electric charging infrastructure and single family home development and garages and multifamily development, putting those in kiosks throughout. It encourages electric vehicle purchases and it's the cheapest time that you can do that is at construction. We can look at for affordable housing. We can look at creating a public financing corporation. Right now, the city of Denton gets an up or down vote on a supportive resolution for affordable housing projects that are in contest with or in conjunction with developers. The city can have a seat at the table and can craft those projects to narrowly tailor and meet the needs of those in our community. The affordable housing crisis has not been created by me or past councils. The affordable housing crisis has been created by a 27% rise in real estate prices from 2021 to 2022 and about 20% the year before and about 15% the year prior. So we've got a, a crisis of, we got to make sure we bring in good businesses that pay good wages. And we got to make sure we provide them incentives to do so. And one example is WinCo. We gave WinCo an incentive for distribution center, and this is very quiet, but WinCo has programs where they help people in this community that may not be able to be helped or have jobs, and I commend them for that. So it's, I'm asking for your vote. You've seen how I lead. You've seen how I can be restorative. And if that's what you'd like to see, you know, I trust the voters. I mean, Amber's, Amber's a good person. She's got a great heart. And so the voters have a choice and whatever the choice is, you know, I respect that, but I put my name out there because I care about this community and ask for your support.
I'm muted for my dog.
Be like, Peggy, you're muted. Come on.
I figured it out. Okay. Well, thank you, Chris, and thank you, Amber. I was really nervous, but I think we did great. And I, I want to especially thank the people of Denton Matters who volunteered to organize this. I think it's going to be another important resource for local voters. And to that end, and until next time, I want to remind voters that voter, voting by mail has already begun. And in-person early voting begins April 25th and the election is May 7th. Pay attention to the calendar. I'm one of those people too. Whoa, it's already time to vote. And you can find more information about that online at votedenton.gov. Thanks, everybody.
Thank y'all. Thank you so much.